Good evening, everyone. Today is August 21st. The time is 6:12 PM. And this is the Acushnet Planning Board. This is a hybrid meeting. We are live via Teams tonight. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the Town's YouTube channel. We're on via cable and for future watching on the cable channel. I get a motion to open the Planning Board meeting.
Motion open.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we introduce ourselves, please?
Victoria Alvaro, Town Planner.
Peter Gayep, a member.
Mark Francois, Chairman.
Rick Ellis, Vice Chairman.
We have a call-in tonight. Gentlemen, did you have a chance to look over the minutes from the July 17th meeting? I was in attendance. Rick, you were in attendance. Brian, Steve, and Peter were not. Rick, did you have any... This was one of those... This was that ultra quick meeting.
I have no problems with the minutes from the last meeting, such as it was.
Okay. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Motion to accept the minutes of our July 17th, 2025 meeting.
Okay, got a motion. Oh, there's only two of us still, right? Is that still...
Anyone can vote on the minutes. You don't have to be at the meeting.
Oh, okay. I'll take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen. Moving right along. I have to open the public hearing, correct?
So, you do not have to open it because they did not meet the legal requirement?
That's correct. So, just for everybody's information, we had a public hearing scheduled tonight. I'll read what it is. It's the Site Plan Review and Special Permit of 1094, 1094 Main Street, Clemsworth Way, Map 7, Lot 15. Applicants Clemsworth Way Solar LLC and Rewild Renewables, Brookside Realty Trust, represented by Bill and Thomas. The scope of the work was a five-ville AC solar array. We were supposed to have a public hearing tonight, but due to the fact that the proponent failed to file the notice in the paper in time, unfortunately, we cannot have a public hearing. So, this public hearing will be rescheduled for, what is it, September?
September 18th.
And again, for anybody out there watching, you can call or reach out to the Town Planner's Office the day before or the day of to make sure that they are still scheduled for that meeting that night. I hate to see people come all the way down here and be disappointed that it's been rescheduled. Moving on. Discussion. Discussion and vote on revising the filing requirements. Victoria, you want to help me out with this one?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that document is in your packet. So, the revisions to this would basically just be making it clearer to the applicant what their responsibilities are. So, in the top bold area, it was changed to show that the applicants are responsible for notifying the butters and for placing the advertisement, which is what past practice has been since I've been here, but just more about making it clearer in writing for potential applicants.
So, basically, everything on this is the same except highlighted that the applicant is responsible for placing the advertisement?
Mm-hmm, and for notifying the butters.
For notifying the butters.
Correct.
Okay, I think that's good. Gentlemen, any questions?
I looked at it all, right? Thought it was pretty straightforward.
Well, just saw everything in the up and up for entertaining motion to accept the requirements for the filing with the Acushnet Planning Board.
So moved.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Other discussions. Vote on creating a Business Development and Permitting Guide. Victoria?
So, I gave you guys an example. It's not in the packet, but I can pull it up if that's...
Please.
One second. So, basically, what this is, is a guide for applicants to sort of see, you know, I want to open up a business. Where do I start? And this guide goes over all of that. One second. Share my screen. It should pop up any second. So, this is what it looks like. Well, this is a potential one. And Mansfield did a great job with theirs, and they have many different sections, such as key contacts, opening a business, you know. They have different zoning applications on here. It really just kind of gives an overview of who you should be in contact with, where you should start. I think that's something, you know, since I've started here, I'm sure it's been talked about before, that the town kind of has wanted to implement. I've heard it from various departments. I think this would kind of make it easier, especially with changeover in staff and things. We have a consistent guide for our residents and applicants. Yeah.
Now, is this something that would go on the Planning Board website?
Yeah, it could go on the Planning Board website. There's another appropriate spot. It can certainly go there, other departments if they wish, yeah.
I mean, that would be the best. That way, people can look it up online and decide whether... Decide what they want to do.
Absolutely. No, you're right. Even since I've been here, it's something that's been discussed to where people don't know what their next steps are. I definitely think if we have something that's, you know, clearly spelled out, step by step, I want to do this, step one, step two, contact this person, contact that person, I think is extremely important. I looked through this Mansfield, one that you had here, which is a good example. I thought it was very well laid out and very clear. So, I'm in agreement, total favor of making anything easier for our citizens to be able to navigate.
So, this is like an example and be modified to...
To our town.
To our town. I mean, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Anything that helps streamline the process and let people know what they're in for.
Right, right.
A good thing.
It's a good thing. And like Victoria also says, like sometimes, you know, you have turnover from, you know, whether it's clerks or, you know, board members, you know, staff of all, you know, all the staff. When you get a lot of turnover, sometimes people don't always know exactly the procedure. Even they can come and look at it.
I mean, even if it's something that they've got around Town Hall and just say, well, here's what the Planning Board has put forth.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, something as simple as that would be great.
Absolutely. We could definitely have copies printed up and, you know, have them laying around for people to just grab on their way out and have something to, you know, a guide of some sort.
Yeah, I think between this and that, the filing requirements we've just put, that we just voted on, I think that's a good thing to have. People at least have an idea of what's next and what's required.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A lot of times, the engineers, if you get as far as hiring an engineer to do your project, that's fine because a lot of them are used to it and they know the procedure. But a lot of homeowners want to, you know, could do things themselves and have smaller projects that they want to do and they don't want to hire an engineer. At least it gives them an idea of...
What they're going to do.
What the procedures are.
Yeah.
Right, right. And what the procedures are and who to talk to.
It saves talking to several people at Town Hall and getting different stories from everyone. Or somebody misses one part of it, it's...
In writing now.
Right, and it keeps it consistent, you know? So, which is important.
Yeah. So, again, I'm just going to take a quick vote. Is the board in favor of kind of taking this Mansfield example, kind of modifying it towards our town? Obviously, we'd all, you know, look at it again before anything was set, but is that something that we're all in favor of doing?
Yes, sure. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Go take it. Get me out of this. All right, that's one more discussion item here. So, discussion on promoting economic development. Victoria?
Okay. So, permission to share my screen?
Please.
Sorry, it takes a second to load up. Okay, so for the record, Victoria Alvaro, Town Planner. So, I did put this presentation in the packet for you guys, but I know the board has talked about, and the town in general, has really talked about promoting, you know, responsible economic development and things like that to help ease the tax burden on residents, diversify the tax base. So, we'll go over sort of an overview of what the landscape is in Acushnet, which some of these figures you may have seen through master plan presentations and things like that. And then we'll see what are our objectives for economic development? What are some goals and strategies? How can we get there? And what should we focus on first? And finally, our timeline of how to accomplish it. So, the economic growth in Acushnet has been very minimal for the past few years. We have a split tax rate with the residential tax rate being the highest among its immediate neighbors. So, our surrounding towns were the highest. Residential growth contributes to the majority of new tax revenue, and just under 85% of the tax burden is on the residents, and the remainder is a mix of, you know, commercial and industrial. The average cost of a home has increased by 49.1% since 2016, and in 2023, the average cost of a home in Acushnet was $410,000, and it has gone up since then. And for the Planning Board, from 2019 to 2023, only two new commercial developments have been permitted through the Planning Board. Let's say plan reviews. So, our objectives for economic development is essentially to improve the quality of life of our residents and the financial stability of the town. So, some objectives that have come out of, you know, discussions with residents, you know, through our master plan process are to diversify the tax base, to reduce the residential tax burden, and create a more resilient economy, increasing the tax revenue to support essential services and infrastructure maintenance, encourage shopping locally produced goods for the sustainability of our local economy, and to redeem existing small businesses. So, some goals and strategies that we have seen, again, through the master plan process is to revitalize our Main Street, South Main and Main Street, focusing on suitable areas for development, and diversifying the housing stock, as we mainly have single-family homes. So, for revitalizing Main Street, encouraging walkability and place-making was high in the survey, as well as creating a neighborhood-friendly business district from Middle Road to Leonard Street, and reviewing current zoning to determine barriers to development in our downtown area. For suitable areas, we wanted to focus for mixed-use, commercial, and industrial growth, so finding spots in town where that's appropriate for that kind of development, pursuing brownfield remediation at critical parcels, which is parcels that are contaminated sites. So, how do we get those back into compliance? And reviewing our inventory of town-owned land to explore development opportunities, whether that's selling properties to get them back on tax roll and things like that. And diversifying the housing stock so we can meet the needs of the entire community, reviewing the minimum lot size of the residential A District and expanding the residential Village District. These ideas kind of came out of our master plan meetings and from engaging with residents at outreach events, as well as the survey. So, a big part of promoting economic development will come through zoning changes. This can include expanding our industrial and commercial districts to help promote economic growth through clear regulations and simpler permitting. Right now, 95% of Acushnet is zoned residential, so it's only about 5% for the remainder. So, some potential focus areas are to amend the Village Business District. This can include revising and expanding the Village Business District from South Main Street down to Leonard Street. As I mentioned previously, we can expand both the Business Commercial District and Industrial District for suitable areas, and amending the Residential A District for minimum lot size and expanding the Residential Village District, as well as conducting a comprehensive zoning review of the bylaws to remove any ambiguity and improve clarity. So, there are some spots that aren't necessarily clear. I'll get calls on it, things like that, and it's left open to interpretation, and we don't want that. We want it to be clear to developers, clear to staff on how to proceed. So, if our goal is to do one or some of these, you know, in preparation for spring town meeting, we should kind of set some benchmarks for a timeline to stay on track. So, fall of 2025, we want to pick our focus area and review bylaws. Winter, we want to do public outreach and study some other bylaws from other towns, see what has worked well, what hasn't. And, you know, late winter, early spring, we want to draft these proposed amendments. And then in the spring, prior to town meeting, we want to hold the public hearing as that's required. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I mean, one of my only suggestions really is to try and get an idea of what some other surrounding towns have done that... I've worked on permitting retail and commercial developments for 23 years, and almost every time, what... If it's an industrial use, they want close highway access because nobody wants tractor-trailers running past their house all the time, and they don't want to have to deal with it. They want to be able to get off the highway and get to the industrial park or whatever it might be. Retail, those guys are looking for how much traffic is going by the front of the site, and that's why you see more retail in town around this area, Main Street, South Main, because that's where the traffic is, that's where the retailers want to be. Dunkin' Donuts, the convenience store that recently got permitted. So, I think that's the biggest challenge that this town is going to have to attract retail, commercial, and industrial development, is we just don't have the road system and the traffic volumes that a lot of these retailers are going to look at. So, that's why my suggestion would be to look at what some other towns have done that also don't have, you know, great highway access in any one location or a lot of traffic volume along a main road. You know, that's why Fairhaven and Dartmouth, they're... Most of their commercial development is right along Route 6 because that's where the traffic volume is, that's where the easy highway access is, and we're kind of out on the side of nowhere in Acushnet.
Yeah, I don't think we could ever have a Route 6, and I don't think we want a Route 6.
No, I mean, the road isn't there.
Right, yeah. But I do feel that we could get a little bit more from here to Leonard, make it a little bit more commercial, whether it's a dog groomer, a hairstylist, a small restaurant...
No, no question.
Whatever. And then we should make it to where, you know, they put, you know, a small little storefront and apartments above so people can live above it. You know, we should make it to where, you know, they can have a liquor store underneath and live above it and make it easier. Main Street, South Main, they're getting busy. There's a lot of traffic on Main and South Main. Middle gets a lot of traffic all the way to Leonard. I just think whatever it takes for us to make it easier, and again, we're not going to get Target in here.
Oh, no, no, no. I understand. But that was the reason for my suggestion, to look at what some other towns have done that don't have the big road systems.
Totally agree with you. Totally agree with you. But I just think we should start there. And I think out of all the ideas that you presented, and by the way, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
I think out of all the ideas that you presented, I definitely think what would benefit this town the most would be to change zoning to allow for any kind of retail or commercial development, from the smallest to however big we can get it. There's little things that we can do. Obviously, there's always so much sewer and whatnot, but there's little things that we can do as far as zoning is concerned to make it easier for them to want to come in or, you know... You go down to Cape and lots of people have a nice-sized house, literally turn that house into a restaurant, and you drive by, you can tell that was an old house at one time, but now it's a restaurant that seats, you know, 10 or 15 tables. If we could make it possible for people to want to do that here, I think that would alleviate the burden a little bit. Whatever we can do to alleviate the tax burden on this town, I think should be this board's number-one priority is to help out with the tax base. We were all at town meeting. We know what our taxes are like. We know what the school is always wanting more, wanting more, wanting more, and we just need to kind of help our residents as much as possible, I think.
Agreed.
Victoria and I have spoken about this numerous times, and I think that should be our top priority moving forward, is to... Whatever we can get, that and grants, you know, if there's a sewer grant to go, you know, to extend sewer down Middle Road.
Yeah, retail developments aren't real heavy on sewerage. Restaurants are. Restaurants and grocery stores, it's... That's tough without a sewer.
Right, right.
But there are a lot of other commercial developments that are not heavy sewer-y.
Got you. Good, yeah. Well, things like that is what we should really be focusing on. And I know it's been a big discussion for the master plan.
Yep.
And I just want, you know, I'd love nothing better than to, you know, stand up at a town meeting a year from now or two years from now and say, "Look, this is what came in. This is what now is, you know, opened up in our town because of the changes that we made." And I think, again, that should be our top priority for this board. There's lots of things we can do other than that, but I think that's what we should focus on.
You know, and one other thing to think about is to try and attract smaller operations to make them go through a special permit process can be quite financially challenging. And I would say that if there's a way to have a threshold level where businesses below a certain number of square feet, I know the parking thing, that recently got... So, you didn't have to have very many parking spaces and you need to go into site plan review. If you're looking at smaller users, that process is expensive and time-consuming. And just throwing that out as a...
So, you're saying if it's a smaller business, we should try to make it a little bit easier for them somehow?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Streamline it a little bit easier?
Absolutely. I mean, the thing that those people went through with the convenience store, you know, that was a big operation, you know, they had the funds to put forward with permitting. Not everybody's going to have that, you know? And, you know, that, maybe that was a size that you want to have the special permit stuff kick in, but having not having to do that for smaller operations would encourage that type of development.
Agreed.
That's all. That's all. The only reason, I'm just bringing it up as conversation.
Absolutely. No, but that's the way it starts.
Along the lines of that, too, it's also a deterrent, not just financially, but because developers or small business owners get worried that the special permit can be denied. A site plan review is for an as-of-need use, so they know the use is allowed. So, they think, you know, "I might not get this permit. I'm going to go to a town that it is by rights, so I don't even have to deal with that," you know? So, it's also a deterrent that way, too.
Yeah, no, I agree. So, I mean, this was a good opening conversation for this segment. I definitely think as a board, we should all come up with, you know, other ideas or suggestions that we can toss around to each other. And then, like Victoria, had the timeline set up, you know, have something nailed down as far as what we'd like to present at town meeting, some ideas regarding, you know, redistricting of zoning. The one that you had on there as far as lot sizes for different districts is something we should definitely look at. If certain areas only have 6,000 square foot lots and there's an open 6,000 square foot lot right next door, but there's nothing built on it, well, then they should be able to build on it. It shouldn't have to be 10,000 or 60,000, depending on what area you're in. If every other lot is that size, you should allow that person to build a house or build something on that lot if everybody else has a lot that size. So, I mean, those are things that we should look at and encourage. I know that I've spoken about downtown here, trying to make it more of a walkable type thing for people to be able to... It's a tight road. That's what makes it a little bit harder for that road, but...
Through the tip project we're doing for South Main Street, because MassDOT wants us to take over South Main Street at the end of the process after construction, but they're actually working on that. So, I think, you know, down the line, once it gets constructed, it'll be really nice down there.
Nice.
And we're also advocating for on-street parking on one side because our current businesses have such limited parking. That's not something MassDOT typically does, but that has been talked about in the design, so hopefully we can get that as well.
Good. Parking to support commercial operations is the biggest use of land, period. You know, there's so many... Most developments are limited by how many cars you can park there. And parking requirements are... The retail one would be around five spaces for every thousand square feet of space. And a lot of retail... I'm out of... It's been a while, but retailers were always looking for a parking count of around five spaces for every thousand square feet, and that takes a lot of space.
It does.
I mean, to provide five parking spaces with access aisles is easily as much or more than the actual building itself. So, that makes it tough on like 6,000 square foot lots to put a, you know, a retail or other kind of commercial establishment there.
Yeah, no, agreed, agreed. But we just got to kind of really put our thinking caps on and see what we can do to change things. And I think little changes will go a long way. So, that's something we're going to dive a little bit deeper in as a board.
Is Serpent... Do they have traffic counts on some of the major streets in town, you know, without having to go out and do them, you know?
That I'm not sure.
I mean, that will give you some indication, too, of which areas might be more suitable to retail development if there's already, you know, relatively high traffic counts. Lake Street accepted.
Okay, I'll take a look.
It's narrow and winding, and I have to worry about, again, run over when I check my mail these days, but that might be a more difficult road to try and do something with. And there's a... And there's a fair amount of traffic up and down Lake Street.
Yeah, no, there is.
I mean, a lot more so than there ever was.
Well, they're doing a good job of cleaning up the ponds, so I'm sure there's more people using there to go see the lakes.
Yeah, I mean, like when this Dunkin' Donuts went in, when a Dunkin' Donuts goes in, the first thing they look at is how many people are driving by that place every day, and that's why they're all at intersections and the most miserable places are ready to drive.
Yeah.
Because they know that they are going to capture a certain percentage of that traffic that's going to go into their facility and buy stuff. And most of your bigger retailers are like that. They're looking at traffic count.
Yeah, wouldn't be bad.
And again, those are bigger, those are bigger operations, but I guarantee you that the convenience store up here, they looked at traffic count to decide whether or not it was worthwhile.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure. Okay, so we have a direction, then we have a focus. All right. That's it on the discussions. We haven't had anything new come in in the last forty-eight hours. Our next meeting is Thursday, September fourth. Gentlemen, you have anything else you'd like to discuss, bring up topics?
I will be able to make the meeting on the fourth.
Okay.
But I won't be able to make the one on the eighteenth.
Okay. Because that one's a special permit, we need at least four...
Yeah, I mean, I can do, I can watch the thing on YouTube for that one meeting.
Yeah.
But September's kind of not available.
Okay, no, thanks for letting us know. We'll have Victoria reach out to the other board members just to make sure we can have a quorum for that public hearing, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Appreciate the heads up on that one. That's all I got, gentlemen. I'll adjourn the motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Ladies and gentlemen, it is six forty-five. Good night, thank you.